Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Etziggo City Council meeting. Tonight is Monday, August 9th. Audra, can you put in the record that all city council members are present, along with our city administrator, our assistant city administrator, our attorney, our engineer, and our planner, along with Wright County Sheriff? Do we need to do a mic check, or is it on? Okay, perfect. Then we will ask you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item of business is our open forum. This is the portion of the meeting where residents can come to the microphone, state your name and address, and limit comments to five minutes or less. Would anyone like to speak at this time? Yes, you can please come to the microphone.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi.
My name's Michael Steiner. It's been one year ago that I was here advocating for means to have transportation outside of Kittredge Crossings, which is now some 20 years old since it was first conceptualized, and now has a tenant of hundreds, if not approaching a thousand or so. I don't know what the exact is. And of course, as I presented back then as well, we have Kalioscope School. Students don't reside there, but they need to get there, and sometimes perhaps leave. So since that time, I was before this council, three times advocating for this, and was pleased to learn that I was here when it was voted on affirmatively by all that were here to vote that night for that to take place. And that was great news, not only for me, but as I say, I do advocate for many people. We just had a night out, as maybe some of you attended, in different areas that you lived in at the park there. And a lot of people with a lot of kids, a lot of interest in what can be done with this trail. Others think of it as a sidewalk, but it serves the same purpose. So since then, I've been waiting to hear when this would take place. And as some of you may have heard, I don't know, and I've contacted a number of individuals within the staff or contract folks. I've been told four different times when this would take place. Was involved with speaking to the clerk who told me when it was going to be posted. And so more recently, it was established on the website that it was going to be between August 2nd and or September, yes, July, August 2nd to September 2nd. As a result of not seeing anything take place, when August 2nd rolled around over a little over a week ago, I placed a call and was again told a different timeline. These timelines, as I say, went from being told late June to early to mid-July, all the way up to September 2nd each time going forward. It wasn't until just a week ago that there were finally some stakes put in out alongside. If you go along 70th on the side, you can see those stakes finally being set. They sat there for two weeks, or a week, excuse me. And then just today, there was actually some weeds removed along in the culvert area, but no actual construction. And I know there's two others that need to be renewed, but not construction as we have here, because this is doing from groundwork. So I'm just concerned, because we know how Minnesota seasons can go, and if things fall back. I think spoken with a couple of you. I know that COVID has been here, but the particular concern that I have is that I even spoke with a representative from the contracting company and was assured that this would be in place by the time school started. Well, really, that was a little bit of a misnomer, because there was summer school as well. But I assumed that the thought was before the fall school session. So just recently, I called just a week ago, spoke with the city engineer, and was told that he had just learned, just a week earlier, that there was going to be a four to five-week delay due to concrete, due to some things that needed to be adjusted for the pads and culvert areas. I don't have the technology exactly down the wording. But I said, really? Four to five-week extension? What's going on here? Hopefully, that's okay to be transparent and ask him questions, right? I said, this contract was awarded about the middle of May. Why would we just now be, was the city just notified now, less than two weeks ago of this? It's a good question, Mr. Steiner. I'll have to check and see. Tried to contact the engineer today. I didn't get response back. Maybe he hadn't learned, but he said he would check and see. And I said, may I share with you my concern? Because I was told, by the way, that this was a new construction company, and they were vetted for at least 10 days to find out if they were going to be adequately able to meet the contract deadlines and specifications. And obviously, they, whoever they are, decided that this was good, and that would happen. So I'm asking myself, well, they're this professional. Why would there be this gap of time between the time the contract was lent? And that was just last week. Here we were in August, four to five weeks. And you know how timelines go with something like that. Maybe that's conservative. Maybe that even can't be that. I don't know. I'm just a citizen, trying to advocate for the things that I expressed a year ago, which was the safety of all of us and access to something outside of that crossing area that has no safe exit out unless you're in a car. People in wheelchairs, people bound, people like in my situation that have huge vision problems. It's very unsafe, and I think everyone agrees with that. So I was very concerned. So I bring before you that my concern, as I expressed then to the engineer, why did they wait so long to tell you? And by the way, if they don't meet the deadline, and it isn't COVID-required, i.e. meaning I'm a reasonable person, if it was something out of their control, I understand. But will they be held accountable for any potential penalties if it's not up and running? That's the way the engineer told me, that's the way the contracts read, they're to be used. Today, I was told that if they are not ready, and if the contract is still late, as I've been told, they won't be by September 2nd, then they won't be open for business. The city won't authorize that the city says they're okay to go. So as someone who feels passionate, it's probably a strong word, but it is something that I care much about. I would hope that the city would closely look at, and that I, as a citizen, could be informed as to evidence that that request for the materials was made on behalf of the contractor in a timely fashion. Because if it was just that they were too late, they forgot about it, they overlooked it. Or, just thinking outside the box, maybe they had other jobs that they're involved with and that they wanted to put as a priority over and above this job. I don't know. And I'm not saying that that's the case, but it's a question that comes to my mind. We certainly know that no days were lost to weather, right? Because you might stretch one day with the one day of rain that we had that could have affected some weather. But certainly, that wouldn't put the need to do that. So that's what I'm here checking on today. I'd like to be able to get some feedback from whoever those officials are, that where we stand. Because I even advocated, I said, why can't they get tractors or dozers out there now and be doing the part that's going to need to be done if they had already scheduled for that? And I was told that was a good idea. But a week's gone by, over a week since I suggested that, nothing's occurred.
Let, Michael, let's let the engineer comment, Ron Wagner, and then if it's, if Dave, you can have, be kind of ready to answer any of the contract questions, as Michael brought up.
Yeah, so the contract was awarded on June 15th, and you would hope that the contractor was working on getting supplies in that in a good manner at that time. I did ask him when he ordered his concrete pipe. There's a little bit of concrete pipe on either end of the 70th Street project. That's to get the storm sewer out of the way of the trail. And there's 50 feet on the west end and 250 feet on the east end. So that's about 300 feet out of 1,600 feet. So I've talked to the contractor, too, about getting, starting work on the other portion of it. Again, he did say August 2nd was the start date. We went out and staked it. We're the contract administrators as a city. We are not the contractors. We cannot do the work. And he is not in default until at the project deadline. So he's still compliant with the project. He has told me that he believes his storm sewer is going to be late. And he did say four or five weeks, about a week or so ago. I'm hoping he can work something with the concrete facility. But again, that's completely up to the contractor. Again, we just administer the project. We hear the dates from them. We put it on the website. If they don't show up, then we call and wonder why they are and change those information that we're sending out. As far as the contract, I guess if he did fall out of compliance with it, we'd have to have discussion with city staff and city council to determine what our next steps are towards any damages.
And his contract is up with September?
August 27th.
August 27th.
Did you say August 27th?
Correct.
On the website, it says September 6th.
Yeah, there's some seating and stuff that they can accomplish after. It has to be substantially complete by August 27th.
Okay, so, and thank you for that. That's helpful. The only other question I, or I just make a point, because I called, and I appreciate the staff working with me or taking my calls. I haven't made an inordinate amount of calls, but I would ask, just a little clarification. For instance, when I called for Ron today, I was told that I couldn't have his phone number, because city contracts, and they were concerned about how much the cost would be if cities charged so much in the agreement with the contractor. From a citizen's standpoint, I don't know that that makes for ease of doing business. And as I say, I wasn't able to leave a voicemail directly. And I would just like clarification that that's an actual policy that the city has, that that's exercised to all folks calling in? Or is it on a just subjective, one at a time, for whatever reasons? So hopefully, the site will keep us posted when things are going or how it goes, or, and if there is some follow-up, that that would be appropriated on my part to do so.
Yes, thank you. I looked at staff. Audra, are you the one that spoke with them?
I did speak with Mr. Steiner, and I wasn't sure what the policy was. Others, places I've been, we don't usually give out the number because of the fact that we do get billed when we are reaching out to our contracted staff. So I did offer to transfer him to Mr. Flaherty, and I did send an email off to Mr. Wagner right away, expressing Mr. Steiner's concerns. And then Adam did follow up with me, saying that he had spoke to Ron.
I spoke with Adam today. I didn't speak with Ron.
Correct. I said I had transferred to Mr. Flaherty, and then I had emailed Mr. Wagner to let him know your concerns. So I don't know what the true policy is, so that was my.
So in the past, I mean, we have taken information, got into the gentleman, but there has been a, some people have their numbers. So you weren't treated any differently than I think that anyone would have handled it. Adam, sounds like he spoke with you, and?
And he told me that he didn't have the answers that I asked.
Correct, I'm not the same.
And he's not the engineer, right?
I understand, but I was told that he is who I had to speak to in the absence of Ron. Whereas, what I'm saying is, just makes for a little, not trying to pester, I'm just trying to get most important answers and to keep abreast of it, so.
And Ron, correct me if I'm wrong, you take phone calls, the residents call you?
Yes, Mayor, I, after Adam sent the message that Mr. Steiner's request, I again reached out to the contractor to find out what the day was that he had ordered the storm sewer pipe. And he got back to me, it was after 5:00, but he got back to me later, said he wouldn't be able to attend tonight's meeting. And I didn't ask him to, so I didn't expect him to. I just told him that it was probably going to be an item of discussion. And then, but I did find out that he did order the pipe on July 28th.
He ordered it on July 28th?
Correct.
Okay.
You had said earlier, he was awarded on the 15th.
15th of June.
So it was about a six-week delay. Okay, well, hopefully, things can move forward as quickly as possible. It may sound like I'm nitpicky, but with my visual problem and with other folks that I've communicated there, they're very anxious to see that. You know, when I started a year ago, I was informed that this project wasn't even on the
It wasn't even on, yeah?
Wasn't on the think about list. And I expressed my concern that here you have a whole community of people that are essentially landlocked. Again, unless they have car transportation out of there. So, and then I bring my own, and I don't represent just myself in terms of any handicap disability issues that folks have. And so that's why I continue to be persistent in hopes that we could yet be used even this fall for that. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor?
Yes.
The work is supposed to start on Wednesday. They're going to be putting in concrete ADA ramps on Page and O'Dea.
Okay. And when will they be over by Mr. Steiner's area, then?
He didn't tell me when the construction would start at that, that area yet.
Okay.
But it is staked, ready to go.
So the stakes, as he said, that rather, that's from your firm that put those out there, not the contractor?
Correct.
Okay. And the the signs that are out there, that will be trail closed on the other side of the city, who put those out?
The contractor.
The contractor, okay. All right, Tom?
Mayor, Ron, the next time you talk to the contractor, could you let him know that it's been brought to the city council's attention? The delay and the fact that the contract was awarded on June 15th, and he didn't put his order into July 28th, and that we have citizens that are coming to council open forums and wanting to make sure that this gets done on time. Otherwise, Dave, I'm sure you'll be able to review the contract and see if there's any penalties in there if it's not done on August 27th.
Yes, I will be well aware of the concerns that the city has on completion time.
All right. This is still the open forum portion of the meeting. Would anyone else like to come to the podium and state your name and address? All right, we will close the open forum, and we will move on to consider our agenda for approval. Does anyone have anything that they would like to add or delete at this time? A motion would be in order, then?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Brittany.
I'll move, I'll move to approve the agenda as written, please.
Okay, is there a second?
Sorry, second.
Motion by Brittany, seconded by Jeff. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. The next item is our consent agenda. A motion would be in order.
Madam Mayor?
Brittany?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Brittany, seconded by Tom. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to administration, item 4.1, the Series 2021 bond issuance. I will turn this over to our city administrator, Adam Flaherty.
Thank you, Mayor. City staff is here tonight to recommend the city council proceed with the debt issuance process. So in front of you tonight, there are three separate motions. One of them would be to accept a proposal from Northland Securities to be the city's municipal advisor for the debt issuance. The second item would be the Water Revenue Bond Series 2021A. The proceeds from this bond issue would go towards financing the construction of Water Tower Number 4, which is underway right now. And the second item would be the 2021B bonds, which are a refinancing of existing debt. And the purpose of that is to achieve interest rate savings. So in your packet tonight, you have both the advisory service agreements with Northland Securities, and you have a finance plan and a resolution for each bond issue. And I'm going to turn it over to Jessica Green with Northland Securities to answer any questions that you may have.
Right. Good evening, Jessica.
Mayor Council, someone remind me to wear quieter shoes next time? Okay, so as Adam mentioned, you have a number of items in your package tonight, two municipal advisory agreements, and then also two resolutions providing for the issuance of bonds. So we've got two finance plans in your packet tonight. I'll go through them really quickly. Adam hit the high note, so not a lot of time to spend here. The first finance plan is related to the Series 2021A bonds. I believe this starts on page eight under this item. So what we've got here is a par amount of $4,575,000 in general obligation water revenue bonds, again, Series 2021A. The proceeds here would be used to finance a new water tower for the city. I understand that construction is underway. So we'd be looking to get you proceeds next month to help finish up that project. In terms of the security, we are looking at a general obligation pledge. Of course, the net water revenues would be used to support the payment. Of course, if there's not sufficient revenues, then you would rely on that GO pledge, if necessary. We've got a 15-year structure here with the final maturity being 2037. As of right now, we are looking at an average coupon of 1.25 with a true interest cost estimated at 1.34. And then you've got an optional call feature here beginning February 1 of 2029. We did seek a rating for the bonds, so actually, Adam and I participated in a rating call with S&amp;P last week. Went really well. We should have the results of that call back on Monday next week. And then we would be looking to go to sale on August 23rd. And then we'd come back for council consideration that evening with the bid results. If all goes according to plan, we would look to close on September 23rd, I believe. Yes, so that would get you proceeds in hand on the 23rd. There are some additional schedules, of course, included in the finance plan. Happy to dive into any of those if you want additional detail. But I'll conclude my comments there and take any questions on the 2021A before we move on to the B series.
Any questions from council? Tom?
Madam Mayor, on the 2021A bonds, we do have the optional redemption. Are there's no prepayment penalty on that once we get to 2030?
Correct. Yep, so beginning February 1 of 2029, I believe you can call in the 30 maturities and later, and you can call them in in full or in part. So if you just want to pick a certain maturity, we've done that with some of the other existing bond issues for the city, but no, no prepayment, excuse me, prepayment penalty there.
Um, and this might be a question for you, or maybe more, Adam. The 15-year versus if we did a 20-year on this? The reason for the 15-year was to remain consistent with what was included in the utility rate study conducted in 2020. And so that was consistent with that amortization, and actually, the projected debt services less than what was included in that rate study. So that was the primary reason for that. With, I mean, just going outside the box here, but if you did do a 20-year, what, what would mostly change on this? I mean, the interest rate going from that 1.25 or true interest rate to 1.34, what would that go to?
I can tell you. Give me one minute here. I think we'd probably be up by about, I'd say 30 basis points, 35 maybe. So obviously, you'd have a lower payment overall, and just that we'd be stretching that out over a longer amortization. But then again, that interest rate would kick up, so you'd end up paying more in interest over time.
Would you still have the callable features?
Sure. Yep.
I'm just wondering, Adam, since we did the rate study, are there any, like, additional capital costs in water and sewer that we haven't talked about yet? Well, in, on the water side, in 2023, there's a project to connect the east and west systems with a water main stretching down Cassat 38. I believe that's a multimillion-dollar project that we had projected debt issuance for in the rate study. And then, as you get further along in the capital improvement plan, you start to get into additional wells and also modifying the pump houses to accommodate water treatment. So significant capital on the water side, and the sewer side is probably even more, especially in the short term with the expansion of the west facility scheduled to start next year, so. Even though that we kind of had planned for this being, you know, a 15-year payoff of a debt, and it came in lower than what was expected, you'd think it would be, give the city more options by doing a 20-year instead of a 15-year, even though you're going to be paying a little bit more in interest, having those callable features, and just having the option much more payments, principal and interest. I'm guessing that would be what, a P and I payments are?
So right now, we're looking at around 337. And if we were to move that to a 20-year, I think we'd be around 275 per year.
Some of the factors in the rate study, Tom?
About a year.
Sorry.
Yep.
Go ahead. Some of the factors in the rate study that we used to determine the term was one, the par amount of the bonds. Right now, we're only looking at 4.575, I think. And then the, you know, the size of the project, the life of the project. Obviously, a water tower has a expected useful life beyond 15 years, but for a par amount of bonds at only 4.5, I think the importance of achieving the lower interest rate was more advantageous than stretching out the payment and saving roughly 60,000 to 70,000 per year in that service. So some of the larger projects in terms of par on the rate study do have longer amortization schedules. What would the process be if you, I mean, because everything here is based on 15 years? How hard would it be to go from a 15-year to a 20-year?
I don't think it would be super difficult. We may need to back up by one council cycle. We're trying to meet on the 23rd to line up with your regular meetings. We'd have to do some changes. We'd have to do some changes to the official statement. I'd want to get ahold of S and P tomorrow just to let them know that the amortization would be changing. I don't think that it would impact greatly what their outcome is going to be, but certainly it should be reflected in their rating report when they go to committee. So there, there may be a little bit of maneuvering that we need to do, but it's certainly not impossible.
Tom, obviously, by the questions you're asking, you're feeling that it should go to twenty years.
I'm just, you know, over the years, we've discussed this in the past as far as, you know, what gives the city most flexibility? And obviously, I mean, like when you're buying your house, if you're getting a fifteen year mortgage, the interest rate's going to be lower. If you're getting a thirty year mortgage, the interest rate's going to be higher. You're going to be paying more interest. I mean, if we paid it all off, you know, tomorrow, we'd save a ton of money on, on interest. But with all of the projects that, you know, we're going to be having in the foreseeable future, I mean, sixty-two thousand a year over fifty, fifteen years is, you know, well, it's going to be close to a million bucks.
And if it's helpful to think about in terms of market conditions, what we're seeing right now is obviously some optimism in the many, many years out into the future. So that's where we're seeing sort of that yield curve kick off, and that's why I'm saying it's probably thirty to thirty-five basis points higher. I would say that the shorter the maturity, the easier the bonds are selling and the more funds are interested in purchasing them. You do start to lose some investor interest out into the future, just because at that point, people assume that rates are going to be quite a bit higher than where they are now. So looking for other investments. So if, if that perspective gives you anything to sort of chew on in terms of what the market is doing, the sooner the bonds are paid off, the better in terms of what investors are looking for currently.
Don't, I would assume so, but as far as the competition out there for buying or the demand for buying a fifteen year versus a twenty year for water revenue bonds, is that, is that a big
I think that Atsego's credit rating is very good, and therefore I think that you're going to get some nice interest in the bonds. And we'll move on to the second one, but you're going to have two issues in the market that day, which I think will give you some good interest. It is a double barrel bond because you have the utility revenue supporting it in addition to the GO. So I do think that the strength of the issue itself is very good. That being said, when we look at banks or other funds that are looking for bonds, fifteen years is kind of where they go in terms, I don't want to say a max, but when you get out to a twenty year, you can lose some interest there. That being said, I think you'll do well either way. So if the council is more comfortable with that longer duration, we can certainly do some changes to the issue. And of course, shoot for the twenty-third. Like I said, we may have to back up by a cycle. If you do that, we likely want to move both of the issues. So not only this one, but the refunding as well, but it certainly can be done.
Does that, would that screw anything up? I'm just trying to explore, like, if that was a viable option, would that screw up anything as far as pushing the issuance off a full cycle?
No, the, the cash flow is, is sufficient regardless, and the one's a refunding bond anyway, so it's just repaying the old debt. So I'm calculating just shy of fourteen thousand dollars a year extra for those thirty basis points.
So fourteen thousand in interest?
Yeah, it would, over the life of the bond, it'll be fourteen thousand dollars a year or based on that average interest or average coupon of thirty to thirty-five basis points higher. So to stretch it out for five more years, it's costing you fourteen thousand dollars a year.
And it, it, but our overall payments would be decreased by sixty-two thousand.
You would pay less annually, but in the long run, you would pay more.
I, I understand that. I mean, the, if, if we paid it all off tomorrow, we wouldn't have any interest, and we could sit there and say, gosh, we saved four hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars in interest. So, I mean, I, I get the concept. It's just when we're going from fifteen years to twenty years, that extra five years, you know, what total interest are you paying versus, you know, the flexibility and the option we have getting locked in at a, a low interest rate right now?
That's, that's entirely up to the council. I think my recommendation would be to stay with fifteen years, that having a reduced bond payment by sixty thousand isn't material enough to the, the capital projects that we have and the other debt service that we have, to consider that. That's, that's up to the council.
Mayor.
Yes.
So we reduce payments by sixty, but we add seventy, so we're just, we're basically adding ten thousand more debt for those extra five years.
But the, the overall payment is going to be, you know, instead of, you know, five million, it's going to be, if, if you did it over twenty years, what, like five point? I don't have that amortization in front of me.
You know, your overall payment's going to be higher. It's just, it gives us more flexibility in, you know, the next fifteen years. But sixty-two thousand, like Adam says, it's not that huge, but over fifteen years, it's, you know, a million dollars, so it's not.
But we also have laid it out in, when we did the study to show that that's what we should, all of our rates have been based on that too. That it gets covered in the fifteen years.
Well, we can.
Go to, go to the twenty.
Go to, yeah, yep. No, I was just trying to see what, what our options are.
So the next finance plan, the B series, this starts on page thirty-four under that item. Okay, so in this one, we have a par amount of seven million five ninety-five, and these are general obligation water and sewer revenue refunding bonds, series twenty twenty-one B. So the proceeds here would be used to current refund the series twenty-ten C bonds that are currently outstanding. And what we've got here is a final maturity of twenty-six, so we're not looking to extend the maturity there at all. In terms of the estimated savings here, we have a gross savings estimated at four hundred and forty-six thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. The net present value is four thirty-nine eight oh nine. On a present value percentage, we're looking at five point zero six. Obviously, the city's done some refundings in the past couple of years. Typically, we look at meeting that minimum threshold of three percent. So there's some nice savings here, being that we're upwards of five. Now, the, I don't want to call it a wrinkle here, the average coupon that we're showing here is four percent with a true interest cost, which is where we want to pay attention, is point five nine. So we are anticipating that there's going to be some decently sized premium on the bonds, and what that means is that investors are looking for a higher stated interest rate on the bonds, and they'll give you cash upfront to get there. So right now, there's a current principal outstanding of just shy of eight point two million with that premium. That's why we're reducing the par amount of the bond here to five million seven ninety, or excuse me, seven million five ninety-five. And we'll talk about that next on the, on the following page. Same thing here, though. We did seek out a reading for this series as well, assuming that everything comes back the way that we anticipated to. We are looking for a rating of double A plus on the bonds. The bonds will be considered tax exempt, bank qualified obligations. Again, looking to hold that sale on Monday, the twenty-third at ten AM, and we'd come back to the council that evening for your consideration. On the next page here, this is where you'll see that car amount, so you've got your sources and uses, the re-offering premium to get to that four percent. We're looking at around six hundred and sixty-three thousand seven seventy-four fifty-five. Now, we won't know exactly what that premium is or what those interest rates are going to be until the date of sale, but we've set this up based on what we assume is going to come back based on similar sized bonds and the maturity amounts that are in this particular issue. And the reason that we've done some manipulation here of the par and the premium ahead of time, we normally wait until after the bonds are sold to do tho, those changes. We're restricted by the weighted average maturity, and this is going to get down into the weeds a little bit, of the twenty-ten C bonds. In order to have the new bonds, the twenty-twenty-one B bonds considered bank qualified, we have to have a weighted average maturity that is at the same level or less than the twenty-ten C bonds. The weighted average maturity is calculated by the maturities within the issue and a function of the paramount. So we have to manipulate those numbers a little bit to make sure that we're staying there so that the bonds can remain bank qualified. The reason we want to do that is because you get a better interest rate if the bond remain bank qualified. Now, with this issue, it's short enough that the, the bank qualification doesn't matter too much, but we want to keep that bank qualification for the series A bonds. And again, I know that this gets into the weeds a little bit, but overall, what we're trying to do is to maintain the lowest cost of borrowing for both the A series and the B series. So what that means is that, again, we're going to have to manipulate some of the principal a bit and move it up some. But overall, we're looking at a lower payment overall in each and every year of the bond issue. And I'm going to direct your attention to, it's page five of that finance plan. So you can see the comparison between the old debt service and the new debt service in that chart at the very top of the page. So you can see in twenty-two, three, and four, we're averaging around forty-nine thousand in total savings. And then you've got quite a bit of larger savings in the last two years, and again, that's the manipulation of that principal to make sure that we're maintaining that weighted average maturity where it needs to be. So again, looking at four forty-six, seven nineteen as the estimated savings with the gross present value debt service savings at four thirty-eight, five seventy-one, ninety-six. I'm happy to take questions on this series as well, or if, if you want to continue to discuss the other series, happy to do that.
Questions on the series?
Could you again explain the, the true interest cross, true interest cost at point five nine percent versus the coupon rate at four percent?
Yep. I don't think that we have the actual yields in there, but just pull up something very quickly. So the stated rate on the bonds, what we're anticipating is that we're going to get bids with four percent coupons. Or again, that's stated rate on the bonds. But what it would mean, so the reason that we focus on the true interest cost is because we take that cash that's received as premium, and then we combine that with the coupon that's proposed, and from there, we get what the actual yield is on the bonds. So for the twenty-twenty-two maturity, we'd be looking at an actual yield of point two on the twenty-three, at point three, point four on the twenty-four, point five on the twenty-five, and point six five on the twenty-six. So combine the true interest cost, which takes into account the cost of issuance with the bonds, et cetera, we're looking at a point five nine percent, which is what we're estimating currently. So it's a factor of taking that premium and combining it with the stated interest rate on the bond. Does that help?
Yes, and I ask this all the time, but the, in this one, there is no callable feature, and not that you would call this, especially after all the manipulation of principle that you're doing.
Correct. So because this one's pretty short, looking at that twenty-six maturity, you'd end up paying a premium in terms of interest rate on the bonds if you wanted to add a call feature here, just because investors are going to be look at this, looking at this to stay outstanding until the maturity.
Any more questions?
I don't think, I don't think I had any other questions.
All I have. So the motion would be outlined in your packet. Assuming we're maintaining the fifteen year, or do you want to have further discussion on that?
I'm, I'm, I'm good with fifteen or twenty years. I just wanted to explore the, the options, because, I mean, obviously, today you'd be saving sixty-two thousand in payment for, on the principal and interest, but for the life of it, you'd be paying more in interest, meaning that people, especially people that are coming into the city, new people, you know, the three hundred homes that are coming here, the new, everybody else are going to be able to fund some of that if you push it out in five years. So that's, that's just why I was bringing it up. But Madam Mayor?
Yes, Tom.
I'll make a motion to approve the municipal advisor, advisory service agreements between the city Atsego and Northland Securities, Inc.
Would you like them in three motions, Adam? Separate?
You can combine it into one if you really want. I'm just going to make the one.
Okay, then I will second that. Other, do you have it up? They'll be broken. So the first motion is made by Tom, seconded by me. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. There's a second motion, Brittany? Yes.
I'm making a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash sixty, providing for the competitive negotiated sale of general obligation water revenue bonds, series twenty twenty-one A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Brittany, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. There's another motion. Someone would like to make it, Brittany?
Making a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash sixty-one, providing the competitive negotiated sale of general obligation water and sewer revenue refunding bond series twenty twenty-one B.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Brittany, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to planning, item five point one, parish metals. I will turn this over to our city planner, Dan.
Thank you, Mayor. Tammerack Land Development is proposing final plat approval for parish metals. Back in May of this year, the city council approved a zoning map amendment for the development as well as preliminary plat and planned unit development conditional use permit for ninety-three townhomes, two single-family lots, including two commercial lots. The applications tonight are for vacation of existing drainage and utility easements, the final plat as well as approval of the development contract. The site's located at the intersection of eighty-seventh street and county road forty-two, Parish Avenue, on what was at one time the Lefave Farmstead. You can see there's active grading going on in the property now. The developer's anxious to move forward with the final plat to start construction of streets and utilities yet this season. The comprehensive plan guides, the western portion of the property, residential development, and the two planned lots adjacent to Parish Avenue for commercial uses. The zoning is our sixth district, allowing the rural style townhomes and be three general commercial district for the two commercial lots with uses undetermined. The project is adjacent to Country Ridge to the west, which is one acre lots on Septic and Well Utilities. To the north is Parkview Retail and Parkview Brand Apartments. And south across eighty-fifth street, you have additional townhomes within Stonegate Estates across the remainder of the Lefave property. Obviously, to the east is Super Target and the Great River Center Development and various commercial uses there. Preliminary plat, as I said, included the ninety-three townhouse units. There's an average of sixty-four hundred square feet of lot area per dwelling unit, which exceeds the requirements of the zoning ordinance. The setbacks are shown as thirty feet from the front of the buildings to allow parking space on the driveways. There's also twenty feet between the buildings, twenty feet to any rear lot line. Two single-family lots at the southwest corner required as a transitional land use back to the existing single-family homes in Country Ridge. That transition requirement is met north of that curved section of Park Avenue by the Stormwater Basin that will be put in between the future townhomes and existing single-family. Commercial lots, obviously, adjacent to County Road forty-two. The streets within the development will include construction of eighty-seventh street mirroring what exists in Great River Center with the eighty-seventh street mirroring what exists in Great River Center with the inbound and outbound lanes, including turn lanes. The developer will work with Wright County on the improvement of that intersection, including the signalization provision of pedestrian facilities across that roadway. Also, Parkview Avenue being extended south from Parkview Retail along the eastern portion of the development. Really, this is a key connection point for the city for development, not only of this property, but also Parkview Retail's. It provides access from Coburn's, the Duncan Dental Office, back to the signalized intersection at eighty-seventh and Parkview. Streets, the other public streets include Street One along the north portion of the development, providing access into the undeveloped property. And then the extension of Parkview and eighty-seventh street back into Country Ridge. That is the city's secondary fire parcel to the south that would provide that future connection out to eighty-fifth street. Also with the project, there's sidewalks on one side of the public streets, both sides of Parkview Avenue and eighty-seventh street. There'll be a sidewalk along the south side of the private street with a drainage or with a pedestrian easement over it, so the public can utilize that connection point between Park and Parkview avenues. And with the development, developer will construct the trail section between eighty-seventh street and eighty-fifth street to the, or eighty-eighth street to the north. So it'll be the full connection surrounding Parkview Retail all the way down to the signalized intersection at eighty-seventh street. Developer had provided a landscape plan that they'll install as construction moves forward as part of the development that includes obviously yard and foundations for the townhouse buildings. But they also had showed significant landscaping along both sides of Parkview Avenue to screen. Proposed houses from future commercial uses across that roadway, as well as provide additional landscaping on the easterly side of the Stormwater Basin for the transition requirement. The single-family lots will each have at least two sing, two trees planted. They were showing additional buffer trees on those lots as well. Commercial lots would be dealt with at the future. We had noted as part of the preliminary plat application to at least remove trees planted where the access location would be so that there is an understanding by future homeowners that access would come out to Parkview Avenue from those commercial lots in the future. As I said, the final plat will provide for construction of the streets within the development, as well as construction of the trail. There are two outlots, the transitional Stormwater Basin at the west portion of the property, as well as an outlot just north of the remaining Lefave Farmstead. Both have Stormwater Basins, so deeded to the city. Park dedication requirements are met as a cash fee in lieu of land, based on the city's fee schedule. They're also paying fees to the city for utility availability charges based on both the acreage for commercial development, as well as the number of dwelling units within the final plat. The final plat provides for dedication of easements as required by subdivision ordinance overlaying on the perimeter of the base lots, as well as any infrastructure within the development, not within right-of-way. And then finally, the city attorney drafted a development agreement that memorializes the approvals and provides for all the payment of these securities and escrows. City staffs recommending approval of the application, including resolution twenty twenty-one sixty-two vacating existing drainage and utility easements. The final plat findings effect and decision subject to the sixteen conditions outlined. And then resolution twenty twenty-one sixty-three approving the development contract.
Does a developer wish to comment?
Good evening. Dan Weller bring Tammerack Land Development. Marina St. Croix is my address. We dropped off our executed version of the developer's contract this afternoon. And we will be depositing four point twenty million dollars either tomorrow or Wednesday for our escrow city fees. So we should be all ready to go. Looking for the mayor's signature soon. Any questions at all?
I have one question on the outlot. So either Dan, you can, well, either Dan. The outlot that would be south of the commercial building, that, is that actually like the, that, oh, the barn still in a way on?
It's north of the barn.
It's right north of the barn. Okay, because on the aerial picture that you had, it, it almost made it look like it was a double.
Right there.
There was a building there.
And that's the one that was removed when you took down the trees.
The round barn.
No, no, I know. I live very close to it. So I, but just on that one barn thing, I'm like, well, now am I seeing that?
Yeah, there was a cattle shed there.
The cattle shed. Just a clarification.
All right.
Tom?
Mayor Dan, so, out of the, oh, sorry. Out of the roads that are being built in this, which ones are going to be temporarily cul-de-sac and which ones are going to have through access?
Mayor, they're building all the streets within the final plat, so none of them will have temporary cul-de-sac. I'm sorry.
What about the one on the?
Yeah, Mayor. The one that's on the north that comes up towards the single-family lot, that will be a cul-de-sac. Okay, and Park Avenue Northeast.
So it doesn't extend beyond one lot, so we don't require a temporary cul-de-sac in that situation.
Okay, so that's just going to be a dead end for right now? So I, cul-de-sac or dead end, I guess I should say.
So Park Avenue, basically anything that stubs into the Lefave Farmstead will be a dead end. On the south, so Park Avenue and Parkview Avenue.
But Park Avenue will be extending into the road to the, the west.
Country.
Country.
Country Ridge.
So that will have access in and out of this development? And is it the only other access is off of Casade forty-two from forty-two?
Correct, at eighty-seventh street, as well as north to eighty-eighth street.
I know this always gets asked at the planning commission, but I didn't hear it when I was listening in on that. Fire truck maneuvering for any of these. It's spaced appropriately, like we know that we can get rigs down there.
So all the private drives are twenty-eight feet wide and have adequate turning movements for emergency vehicles?
Other questions?
Just when we, when even the dead end streets, not that they're cul-de-sacs, are we going to be putting signs on it? So when people are driving through there, they know that that will be a future.
Future. There are barriers put up in it. There is a sign that says this street will be extended in the future. Emphasis on will be extended in the future.
You mentioned the road that curves to the, so it would be on the left if I'm looking at this, the one that curves.
Avenue Northeast.
Right here, up this, at the top.
To the north.
Yep, and you said that that goes to the back of a home in country.
Yeah, the gentleman who's been in
He's got that.
Dan Ock. Abel, Abel, Bob Abel, who's in a board of assessment. Yeah, it extends to the back of his property.
Okay. And that's where then it could go to his property, but, and that will have a sign that says temporary.
Correct.
Yeah.
So this is Abel's property here. It's basically ten acres. And there's the ability to connect both the eighty-eighth street and this.
That Parkview Avenue, the one to the east, that's parallel to forty-two.
Correct.
There's, how, how much gap is there between that and the other road that it's going to connect to?
So there is no gap.
There is no gap.
Parkview Retail has brought the street down to this property.
Okay.
So this is making that final connection out.
Okay, good.
And you mentioned, Dan, about the trail that I could, that you could get from Country Ridge here. You have this map up. Can you just show it with your cursor then, where that trail will be?
Eighty-seventh street, all the way up to eighty-eighth street. Coburn's put in the section from thirty-nine down to eighty-eight, so it'll complete basically this loop through.
Okay.
And then there'll be sidewalks within the development that you can pick up. Developer will escrow the funds for this section of the trail, but the trail won't be completed until the Farmstead piece develops.
But then there's internal trails also.
There's interior sidewalks, both sides of eighty-seventh street and both sides of Parkview.
Thank you. You'll see us for Hunter Hills Final Plats and North Water over the next month. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Dan or Dan? Otherwise, a motion would be in order. Tom?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-one dash sixty-two vacating existing drainage and utility easements. Approve the final plat of parish metals, subject to the conditions stating stated in the findings of fact and decision as presented and adopt resolution twenty twenty-one dash sixty-three, approving a development contract.
Motion by Tom, seconded by Brittany. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to city council reports and updates. Does anyone have anything? We've all been together since five thirty.
We did not have a question.
I will move on to staff reports and updates, starting with Adra.
I have nothing to report, thank you.
Adam?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one item. The city did receive its first half settlement of the ARPA funding, which is the next federal stimulus package, I guess I would call it. So city staff is exploring guidance from the Treasury, and we'll bring that back to council. To seek some direction on how to use that funding here in the coming months.
Did they make any significant changes that you guys are aware of?
I don't want to comment. I haven't read it close enough. I know I've glanced over some of that fake use that they've had, but I don't want to.
I know they're always changing things, so it's like, it's slightly different.
Okay.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, Sabrina? All right, Dave?
Adam, Mayor, I have nothing. Thank you.
Ron?
Mayor, Heritage Hills curb should start this week sometime. It's going to take two days to complete most of that curbing. Flat project's well underway and moving along. And then the trails, again, are going to start on Wednesday with concrete ADA ramps. And then Adam and I met with MINDOT officials today regarding that LPP grant for the left-hand flashing arrows on one oh one and the county state highways. And we did discover that it could be advanced constructed and repaid at, from MINDOT at a later date, so that's good news and might be in your budget for this next year.
That's great. All right, Dan?
Mayor, the planning commission has a meeting on August sixteenth, next Monday. The main application that will generate attention is Hanson Heights is back. D.R. Horton is the builder now with them moving over from Ashwood to this development. But last week, we also received the final plat application for the remaining addition of Ashwood with Jeff Benzinger taking over as builder within that project.
So switching. Interesting. All right, Jason? Jason never tells me nothing to report, which is good.
Three things to report. First update from council meeting last two weeks ago.
Yes.
We had a discussion, obviously, about Packard Avenue speed. So a quick little update on that. We put about, it's between ten and eleven straight hours where a squad car was somewhere on that road in the last two weeks where it was there observing. And we were trying to mix it up as far as what time that was. Fastest speed we had was a sixty-one. Kevin sent me the data from the speed trailer, the fastest speed. I think the speed trailer said was sixty-three. So it doesn't confirm or deny any, you know, anything. I, I think.
They just might not be there.
You know.
Those two weeks.
I that, and it's certainly not to discredit the residents. I truly believe there is issues. It's just, I, I think what it's solidifying is that it's such a small percentage that we have to try to time it where we can, so it's, it's good that in a two-week course that that is the highest speed we had. I mean, that's, it's a good thing that, okay, wow, it's not like we sit out there and it's just a constant autobahn issue where we have people going eighty miles an hour, ninety miles an hour the entire time. However, you know, the goal was to be able to try to make some progress on this by spreading the word through traffic stop citations or whatever it took on that aspect. And unfortunately, we haven't been able to develop any leverage because we haven't had anybody to pursue. So we will continue to work on that.
I have a comment, just because they did mention that they feel like people are on the lookout for watching this. So as you've had ten hours out there, are we sure it's just not that somebody drove by, saw a car there and said, don't go there? I'm, so.
And that's, is it somebody that's drag racing does exactly that? Let's go run down there. Oop, squad cars there, oop. The speed trailer's out there and about the speed trailer, you know, some people see a speed trailer and they think there's a camera sitting on it and recording, so.
Right.
Again, good and bad in this situation.
Sure.
But we would have expected to at least have somebody come take the corner at Mach five and squeal the tires a little bit and at least be able to address that.
And we didn't have.
I would, I would chalk it up as just, sometimes those are just the odds. There's plenty of times where I go work a federal grant shift and I can't find anything. I know it's out there, it's just timing. So we'll continue to work on it. Again, I don't want to just chalk it up as, I'll see here, there's no problem because I certainly don't believe that's the case. So we'll, we'll take a few different angles at it and see what we come up with.
Thank you.
One of the other things that we had, I had briefly mentioned, I guess, and it was kind of one of those things that I didn't want to get too much information. And in regards to some of the crime that we had had with, about two and a half weeks ago now, with some burglaries related to some of the organizations from the cities coming up and committing some crimes. I think that group is somewhere up around a hundred or so different locations across the suburban area. Plymouth has been absolutely obliterated by that group. Carver County, kind of their borders with the metro got hit really bad. So that has been our absolute top priority in the middle of the night, trying to figure that out and moving the chess pieces around to try to catch them in the act. Last night, we I don't want to use the term lucky because I, I think it was fortunate that we had everything set in place, but we did catch two people last night in Delano that we are, I'm, I want to put it a hundred percent that they're somehow involved. They certainly match everything that we have with, we had pictures from the Atsego Target taken by our detective at Works Town, and he had sent that out to all of us. That person absolutely matches the person that we had last night. Including a whole bunch of financial transaction cards that were belonging to people all over the place. So we do have two people in custody in there. Our detectives bombarded with all the other detectives that want to try to piece some things together as well. So I'm hoping that will solve some of the issue. I'm not sure, you know, how, how far that organization goes, but at least we have something to show for as much effort as we put in for it. So I'm glad we have that and we can, part of it can be attested to. Somebody just being vigilant in the middle of the night and calling nine one one on what is generic is suspicious, you know, again, that reiterating, if you see something weird, just call nine one one. The call literally came out as a, there's a sedan, it's weird. And that's all it was. We had a nine one call and go. And fortunately, the deputy took it very seriously and was able to accomplish quite a bit of things in the course of a couple of minutes. And we were assisted by about five different agencies all in the middle of the night tracking this down. So a lot of agencies that have been hit pretty bad with this, and they all were very vigilant in responding to help us out and making sure that there wasn't any escape path. So, and just the final thing, we had a lot of emergency vehicles respond to a car that ran into a house. The over, I don't want to give the exact address, but the intersection of Marlowe and County Road thirty-eight about it was four twenty in the morning, we were called to an explosion, actually, is basically how it came out. A residence, fortunately, were A residence, fortunately, were out of town, but a car with somebody that had too much to drink had driven into a house in such a violent manner that it took a lot of, took out a support meme that was holding up part of the house. Took out part of the, the majority of the west wall, and I'm glad there wasn't extra weight from the people in the room upstairs because the whole house started to kind of sag because of how violent the car hit it. So, fortunately, we have enough resources. I credit Albertville Fire Department with showing up and helping us out with securing that and getting all the different utility entities out there to secure it, as well as Chief Eric Bowens got some resources. We were able to get a company out to basically kind of do emergency contracting or carpentry services on Sunday morning at six o'clock to help secure the house and make sure that there wasn't any other structural damage. So, I'm glad there wasn't, wasn't any injuries. However, very easily could have been completely different. So. Questions?
You guys have been busy.
Yes.
Nice work.
Yeah, thank you for.
Thank you.
And, you know, like you said, with the Packard situation, I mean, maybe now that Speed Vega's not there, tides will change and we will be able to find some people.
Well, and we're going to continue doing what we're doing.
I'll just say, I have an uncle that lived there for many years. And it was, it was far and few between when you'd have someone racing. I never, I never personally witnessed when I was over there, like people, drag racing, and I'd stop by, you know, maybe two or three times a week over there. But, but every once in a while, you'd get somebody that, you know, was going, you know, wanted to check out how fast their car could go, but it's, it was far and few between. And I talked to him because I, they've, they've had this issue before, you know. Didn't seem like it was that big of an issue, but there are people that do walk. And there's a few blind spots, you know, towards the south where that hill is. And, you know, all, all you need is just that one. Because there's really, there's, there's nothing on the sides but ditch.
Well, thank you, Jason.
Thanks. Thank you.
Anyone else have anything? If not, a motion to adjourn would be in order. Motion by Tom, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion. The meeting has ended. Thank you all for attending this evening. And for council, we have a continuation with our special meeting. So, we'll take a three-minute break and start back up. My, my twins were, had the feet.
Oh, were they?
Like the whole time. All right, once Adam comes back. Are we ready?
You know us, we like.
What happened?
Ross was making fun of those of us that wear loud shoes.
Well, and poor Jessica's like, "I'm sorry," and then she was trying to sneak out and it's like, "Just walk. It's fine." All right. We will resume our special meeting. Adra, are you ready? Good to go. Okay. We're resuming our special meeting at eight nineteen. Let's go.
Okay, Mayor. So, you have a packet which included a short memo with just summary information. I don't plan to necessarily go over that. In your packet, there's also the schedule that looks like this. So, tonight, we'll try to get through the left-hand columns of those departments. And then in your packet, there is also a summary of the tax levy as it sits today. So, we can briefly touch on that.
And just so everybody, also, I mean, sure, but on August thirtieth, it's the fifth Monday, so we're meeting.
Correct.
Everybody sees our numbers.
Thank you. Love those off-night meetings.
August thirtieth?
Yeah. You won't be there? Okay. It's five thirty?
Five thirty on August thirty.
Yes, five thirty. Okay, Tina will not be present. Are you doing Zoom or?
No, I have a, I'll be work, work meeting.
Okay.
All right. So, I'm going to start with revenues. So, in your big binder that I handed out, if you go to page two, that's where we'll start with the revenues.
Realize this is awful, small on the screen.
So, y'all have a.
Get rid of the top bar and make this bigger.
Oh, my.
Yeah, go to, Adra, go to full screen view. No.
Upper right.
On the way top.
Yep, upper right.
Right corner of the screen.
Where it says view.
So, taxes, property taxes.
Move like that little site. Pull it up. Can you pull it up, Adra, and then it'll go up on top? It should falter back. Yeah, it should.
And then it'll shrink the screen too. There you go.
There. Thank you.
Everybody ready?
Yes.
All right. So, property taxes makes up a significant portion of the general fund budget. The levy for twenty twenty-two is at four point nine eight million. So, that's an increase of six point six percent over the previous year, the current year, I guess I would say. And that, that accounts for sixty-eight percent of the general fund revenues. Other revenue source includes cable franchise fees, mostly on par with last year. It's actually somewhat declining revenue sources. People have been deviating from the normal charter cable service. So, as they lose customers on the cable TV side, that rental actually declines. The next section is licenses and permits. So, the primary driver here is, is building permits, and that number is one point one six nine million estimated for twenty twenty-two. So, that's based off of two hundred and sixty-one new building permits and then also an allowance for other types of general permits, commercial industrial type permits at seventy-five thousand to get to that number. So, as you can see, compared to twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and year-to-date twenty twenty-one, it's actually still a pretty conservative number. That two hundred and sixty-one permits was actually the seven-year average over the last couple of years. So, an increase over the current year budget due to upping that average number up to two hundred and sixty-one or two hundred and sixty-one. The intergovernmental group of accounts is just some market value, homestead credits for agricultural properties. It's a relatively small line item. And then police state aid that filters through from the county at seventy-eight thousand based off of previous year actuals. Charges for services, mostly consistent with previous years at two hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Bumping up some of those accounts based on looking at previous year actuals and year-to-date after twenty twenty-one. And then on the second page, page three, mostly all minor revenue accounts until we get to the last one, which is two hundred and eighty-six thousand. So, this is a contribution from the water and sanitary sewer funds. The details actually broken out on page fifty-four of your binder, but the water and sewer funds won't be able to operate without all of the administrative and council functions as well. So, they pay, they're pay share of that cost as well, and that comes up to two hundred and eighty-six thousand for next year. Any comments, concerns? The biggest deviation from previous years would be increasing the budget for building permits. And again, it's a pretty conservative number if you're still looking at actuals, so I think the council should consider.
The, the big increase in the inter-fund operating transfers.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just go to page fifty-four.
Yep.
So, here you can see the breakdown of that. So, all of the allocation percentages are somewhat arbitrary, but it's fair to say that the council might spend up to twenty percent of their time handling utility-related matters, whether that's the debt that you looked at this evening, budgets, rate studies, anything like that. And then all the administrative functions, including myself, finance. They pay a hundred percent of the utility billing positions, and so those won't exist without the water and sewer utilities. We've got HR, parks, information technology, and a rounding number to get it to a nice two eighty-six, eight hundred.
No, I was, and that's, I was just wondering, you know, for twenty twenty was two hundred and one. Yeah, increasing by about eighty thousand. So, that's what like a.
Yeah, so, I would say one of the.
Forty percent.
You know, now having a, a human resource dedicated staff, that, that number, that budget number going into twenty twenty-two is higher than it was in the previous year. Their portion of employees, eight out of thirty-one employees, is increasing each year as well. I tend to try and get as much out of those funds for the administrative functions as I can. Any other comments on the revenue information? Again, for maybe Jeff and Brittany, the, the concept here is reviewing all of these different departments leading up to September. And in September, the council has to adopt a preliminary budget and preliminary tax levy, and that's kind of the bar for as high as you can go on that tax levy. So, there's still a continuous review process throughout the rest of the fall and into December when the final budgets are adopted. Kind of your, your opportunity to see what all the individual line items are in the budget and ask questions. And I'll, I'll usually just touch on some high points. So, if I'm moving too quickly, let me move.
I do like that it's twenty percent for decision-making.
Twenty percent.
We did talk a long time tonight, should be.
Kurt never complains about it. All right. Speaking of city council decision-making, here is the budget for the city council department. So, staffing, personal services, consistent with the prior year, no changes there. Supplies, again, no change. Overall, there's just a change of about seventy-seven hundred. Most of that's a reduction in line item number three ninety, which is contracted services. So, the community survey that we discussed earlier tonight was budgeted in that account. And the seventy-five hundred for twenty twenty-two is facilitation of the strategic plan. And so, going forward, I would maybe assume at this point that those two items will kind of go back and forth from one year to the next. Earlier on in the budget, I believe at the budget kickoff, I had asked if the council wanted me to explore council salaries, which is one of the sheets that I handed out to you this evening. And so, what I did is I took basically the same cities that are used in the compensation study for staff and grabbed what. and, and grabbed what, uh, their mayor and council salaries were. So the top group is more the neighbor group, uh, around Atsigo. Uh, as you can see, probably slightly on the low side, although that's somewhat skewed by Elk River. And then taking into account the rest of the cities in the compensation study, again, on average, probably, uh, a little low, but again, there's a few in there that are skewing that with Fairbowl, Lionel Lakes, and Elk River being the high three out of, out of the data collected, and so. Again, this is just some information I gathered for you to see. I, I think the discussion was council salaries hadn't been explored in, uh, many, many years. And so I wanted to provide you some data, and I'd be seeking direction on whether you want me to gather any more, if you want to discuss this, or it's good just to have the information.
Mayor. Is there any other, for these cities or council members or mayors, is there any other compensation? That was just, is just the salary here?
So the, on the right-hand side here, the, the cities that had that data available, I entered it in. Uh, NA means that they do not do that, so NA means, for example, Monticello. Uh, they don't have special meeting pay or training pay or subcommittee pay or anything like that, that's always factored in for the salary. Whereas the item, the cities with blank information, uh, didn't have it available. I pulled most of it from their city code. So I didn't, um, follow up with emails to their city staff.
And I'll just go, one question would be too, what about, um, adding maybe a utility?
You mean like mileage or something?
No, you know, if we all live in Atsigo, we were elected, is there would be a word for it, maybe a, a, a benefit to having this also to have like our water and cable bill like a, a credit, or a, you know, it's an average bill of a hundred and twenty, you get a hundred, something like that, a, a month, or maybe a property tax credit, or what else do we pay here? Yeah, just those two things that I can think of, anything like that.
I think that would get too complicated as far as like citizens going like, wait, why do you get a better deal than I do?
Right.
Like, well, it's because I go to, you know, the meetings, it's like.
I've never heard of that, like what you're proposing in the state of Minnesota, so I wonder if it's.
Right, that's what I'm asking. I, I, I would think people would probably be kind of like, what, what else are you getting deals on?
Right.
When we get a check, it's right out there upfront, you know, this is what you're gonna pay.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
It should be a perk of the water, I mean, we, there's capital.
Right, I asked that, I was, when I was a, when I worked for Comcast, they gave us, you know, everything cable, and we use it as well. We're monitoring, we're learning how to use the internet. We're learning how to use the phones, when I go to you as a customer, oh yeah, my internet's like this, TV's like that, phones like that, so that being said, water and whatever, you know, so.
Yep, in, in, in that, the company is charging the customer, they're getting the money, and you, you as the employer are getting, you know, the perk from the company, whereas we're kind of like, and they had it. They, they, I, I would think you would receive a lot of unhappy people if you did that. I, I guess if I was summarizing the data, the, the salary is probably a little on the low side, but with the per meeting pay, it, it probably is pretty consistent with most of the other cities here. It's just hard to quantify that out exactly.
We've never gotten this information, so I think it's good to see.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm surprised on some of these totals, I like Dayton is paying as much as they do for.
And Monticello, yeah.
I'm real surprised on that, and Lionel Lakes and, interesting.
That's good information.
Yeah.
Thank you for gathering it for us.
No problem.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so back to the council expense budget, again, really the only change is taking out the strategic plan, or I'm sorry, it's taking out the community survey and inserting the strategic plan.
He's just switching it, like the one year we did.
Oh, okay, yep.
It's really the only item of, of, of change. All good?
Yeah.
Alright. Should've had Dave stay and experience this, but, uh.
Why didn't you make them? I see, I see we just send all of our emails also to these cities that did, we'll just forward them all to them.
Not all, but some.
So, let them know.
Leave it like this where it's not from the city of Atsigo, this. Look what we found, did you see this?
Uh, legal budget, there's not much to it. It's basically, look at twenty nineteen, look at twenty twenty.
Out of trouble every eight.
And twenty twenty-one, so it's basically just the formula that takes.
Page are we on?
Seventeen.
Sorry, seventeen.
Seventeen? Yes, okay, thank you.
So this. Any questions on the legal budget?
When did Dave start working for Atsigo?
The beginning of twenty nineteen.
Okay, yeah.
Beginning of twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty, because.
Beginning of twenty twenty.
We interviewed him. He was gonna get transitioned, yeah. Then COVID happened, and we didn't really see him much.
He started down in.
Inside kitchen.
And this, this isn't all of his time necessarily.
Right.
Some of his time gets allocated out to, for example, Parish Meadows was here tonight when he's drafting a development contract for that.
They, they pay pass room, so we, we pay him for our stuff, but those other people, same as their contracts.
Well, we, we still pay, it's just allocated.
We pay it, it's not included in this budget.
Right, we pay it, then they pay us.
Okay.
Pass room.
Okay.
Good with.
Thank you.
Alright, next to page thirty is emergency management. There is an increase here of sixty-three hundred, uh, I highlight object number three ninety, contracted service. So each year we pay Wright County, uh, a, a service fee on our eight hundred megahertz radios. This isn't a new fee, it's always been included in the streets budget, but as we've started to focus a little more on emergency management, I felt like this was a better department to budget that for. And then also an additional eight hundred megahertz radio and programming at three thousand, the staff numbers continue to grow. Uh, the idea is to have one for each, uh, especially in the public works, parks. Uh, they are transitioning to using them almost full-time for communications while bowing and things like that, so making them more multi-purpose as well.
How many do we have, or?
I'd point to Kevin for that.
Kevin? Seventeen.
Right now.
Actually, we've got fifteen right now. I've got two more on my desk that we just acquired from the, uh, uh, Centerpoint Energy Grant. So we just got those, we'll get them programmed, and then they'll go out in the field.
But when you said that, so you're, you're putting it in the budget here, but you still kept some in Kevin's budget too, that.
I used to budget it through.
You used to budget it, so now you're just shifting it all to this.
I just moved it from streets to.
Okay, sorry, I heard you saying, I was like, but so we're in two spots still.
Same number, just in a different spot.
Okay. Makes sense, thank you.
I had a note in here too, that as we progress with the emergency service study, if there's anything that comes up as a result of that, whether it's additional training, uh, or additional items the city needs to take a look at, but, uh, we could certainly add those in the budget later on. But again, I don't.
Cause we did talk about council training, right, yeah, and, and tabletop exercises.
And there, there is fifteen hundred already included in here for training, so I don't expect it to be material to the point where we could actually increase the budget.
Cause we'd still have money that we can take from council, continue to see that we can pull over.
Alright, uh, page thirty-one is animal control. Uh, so the fees here are to, uh, a group called Monticello Animal Control. It does all of the, I guess, the, the pickups, they go around, take the calls, pick up the animals, and then the city of Monticello handles the boarding of those animals, uh, and so that, that's what the cost here for. Pretty much in line with past years, so.
What's her response to?
They, they come out pretty quickly. I mean, if you have a feral cat situation or dog, it's the right, I mean, there's, there's not a lot of complaints I, I've ever gotten from them, and she's really nice to work.
Somewhere between seven to ten animal per month.
Oh, I didn't think it would be that way, but.
But like, if that's the, if a resident calls the Wright County Sheriff and they call them, then they have to come get the dog or cat or.
Squirrel.
Yeah, I'm thinking, of course, dead animals, I guess we should.
No.
No, this is, this is live animals, these are live animals, dead animals go to Kevin's department, Kevin deals with that. Call Kevin if he sees dead animals.
Okay.
County Rose, call the county.
Alright, you got it.
It's clarification.
Alright, uh, now we are going to transition to the budget narrative document I handed out to you. Uh, and then I'm going to let Kevin kind of walk you through that, so these, this layout should be somewhat familiar, uh, as we went through them last year. So let Kevin kind of talk you through that, and then we've just got a few more departments, including streets and fleet, which will be related to the narrative, so. Go ahead, Kevin.
Okay, thank you, Adam. Um, first three bullet points there, we've got the, kind of the, some of the comments that have got to do with the strategic plan, uh, that I think really have the most impact on our department. Um, the first one would be proactively expanding infrastructure to responsibly provide core services. Uh, committed to delivery of a quality emergency service responsive to our community needs and expectations in a cost-effective manner, and is a social community with diverse housing, service opportunities, and employment opportunities. Next couple of things that I wanted to highlight on are, what are some things that are kind of different with this year's budget than, uh, last year's? We've really only got two pieces of equipment from the streets department that we're looking to. Well, one, one would be a replacement, one would be a, a new addition, one is a skid loader trailer, and one is an asphalt mill. Uh, another big thing we're looking at, obviously, that we talked about earlier was the, you know, the possibility of the building expansion. Some of the compost set research and the operations, how that's going to, uh, how that's affecting our, our department right now and where we think that's going.
Can, can I ask a question on that before you quit? What, is that meaning you're looking for our own site in Atsigo on that, or, or partnering and needing to help more in Albertville?
I think the relationship is working well right now, but what we're seeing is the growth in the, the continued development. The number of times that one, we've got to haul piles out of there, or how many times a year we've got to grind that brush pile.
Okay.
It's just, we're almost to the point where it's becoming, um, very inefficient for us, because we've got to haul out multiple times a year.
To go to that side of the city, or well.
Well, we've got a, basically, we've got a couple of huge piles behind the shop of screened compost material.
Okay.
And then we've got compostable material that we've got available to screen. But there's a lot of inefficiency with hauling it one all the way out of here, and then back over there. Um, in addition to going over there probably at least one time a day to push those piles up, push the brush up, just so residents aren't, you know, otherwise it's gonna take us three hours to get that material cleaned up, so.
Okay.
It, it's working right now. Could it work better? Yes. So when we're thinking about the, you know, that eighty-fifth property, um, it's very central, easy to get in and out of. It's a relatively large chunk of property, you know, would it work nice by the parks? I don't know if it's an ideal location, but it's, it's something, it's something else to consider with that chunk of property. So that, that's why I wanted to just highlight that, make it, uh, bring it up for discussion.
Yeah, no, I just, I get a lot of requests on where residents can compost and, um, and what's our plan if they don't allow us to go to Albertville?
No, it does, we do have a lot of time into that. On the other hand, we've always got black dirt there for residents available, and they are so thankful every time that we're there, and if somebody's loading up, they, they say thank you. So I think it's a great service.
The only complaint I get from residents is it says that Atsigo residents can't take the mulch or something, I think.
Yes.
They've, they've actually blocked that off or taped over it or something.
Okay, cause it used to, yeah, that, that was a lot of calls over the years that I've gotten, because it was specifically called that Atsigo residents couldn't take that, and I was like, oh, I can't tell them to take it, because that was, wouldn't be following the rules, but like, no one's watching it, so.
There's a red sign right at the entrance that used to say compost material for Albertville only, or something like that, but they've since covered that up.
Cause we can bring all of our stuff there, it's just people couldn't bring it, shift it to their house, if you lived in Atsigo, but.
Any, any more comments on that?
What?
Any more comments?
No, I, I just wanted to ask before we got too hard on.
Um, and then one of the next bigger items that we are considering for next year would be the, the addition of another full-time staff member, and, um, we're kind of thinking the spring, summer of twenty-two to coincide with an additional plow truck that we're purchasing this year. I don't think it's ideal to hire somebody right away in January and expect them to plow snow. Um, I think it's worthwhile to have, hire somebody later on in the year, uh, let them get familiar with the city. Um, but we do have eight plow, we will have eight plow trucks this winter with, um, with seven routes. So my intent is to probably step up and run one of those four routes this year, um, and have eight routes. And then next year, um, try to have another, uh, maintenance one person to, uh, to take that route, and I can hopefully not do it.
So you're going back to plowing this year, is the plan?
Well, I pretty much did all of last year too.
Okay. I'm just referring to Thomas' part when we were at, at the meeting, and you guys requested not to plow, so you could take care of it and stuff, so.
And when I say not plow, it would not mean every time, every condition, there's circumstances where you have to be there. Okay, so moving on, um, I'm, I really don't want to read all this verbatim, but I think what I'll do is I'll just kind of summarize here, um. In the last couple of weeks, I completed the PCI ratings. It took about four days this year to get through all of the streets to give them a rating. I then sent them over to, uh, to Ron and Brent, and the, uh, the PCI actually is, uh, up to about an eighty. So not to jump ahead, but we were at a seventy-three last year. So what we're seeing is some of these proactive maintenance plans are, are, and the addition of all these new streets are driving up that, that weighted average. So, um, I think that's a big step in, in the last couple of years here.
Now we just gotta keep them at that level.
Pardon me?
Now we just gotta keep them at that level.
We're trying, we're trying. Um, another thing that we've done this year was the, the first annual city run cleanup day. I thought it went very well.
Was still great.
What's that?
It was great.
It was a great.
Yeah.
The only complaint that I really heard was to move it up earlier into the year. More cities had it in that April, I think we've kind of got a late start on it, but this year I would anticipate moving to the, uh, that April, mid-April timeframe.
Which now we know, so.
Oh, yeah. Be a lot easier now too, we've got all the contacts, and easy to shop for shopper prices and just be more prepared. So the next graph that you've got in front of you kind of shows our, our staffing levels for the last, uh, back four years, and I wanted to just kind of do my best um, to kind of go do a little bit of a planning schedule out for the next ten years to kind of coincide with what we've got some of the information that you saw on, on the, uh, the public works and city hall expansion. So the last time that we had an addition was, um, was in two thousand and nineteen for a full-time staff member. We'd like to get another one in two thousand and twenty-two. And basically what I did is I kind of went off that three to four-year average, and one of the main drives, drivers that, excuse me, that I see for our department to use as is, is a way to trigger another full-time employee is probably our biggest public presence, and that's plowing snow. It's hard for us to really know definitively when that trigger mark is, but what we're seeing, um, and I hate to jump ahead here again, but you know, we like to see about forty miles per plow route, and it seems like about every three, four, or five years in somewhere in that window, we're triggering that next level to make that addition. So while I, while. So while I, while we went from two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty, we jumped up about six miles. Six point eight per route multiplied by seven plow trucks that are doing that, that's it. That's forty miles, that's another trigger point. So we're trying to, you know, equate some numbers to, to vehicles to really kind of trigger that, that next trigger point for adding staff and. Um, I think we're there, we've already ordered the truck for this year, so that's how we're kind of coinciding that. That staff addition for twenty twenty-two. So kind of a long way to get there, but that's kind of how we're. Kind of wrap our head around. Any questions?
So is mostly being. Kevin, just real, real quick, uh, that forty-six point eight, when you have number forty-two on there, that's, uh, at zero, that wasn't.
Truck number forty-two at the bottom.
What about it?
You were still taking, uh, all the numbers above and dividing it by. Seven, or were you taking just the six and dividing it by?
No, that should be forty point six on the bottom one for that.
The twenty-twenty-one year miles?
Yeah, for truck number forty-two. Sorry about that, yeah.
It should be what?
Forty point six, because there was no mileage increases to that route.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Does that change that forty-six point eight average at all, or?
Both the blues are chasing each other, ooh, which was going to find out the number first.
I don't have fast fingers, so. Forty-six point seven five, so forty-six point eight is correct.
You made me sweat for a second.
I, I, I saw zero and I'm just like, Dave, we, we lost a truck, I, I didn't do the math on it, so.
But thank you for questioning. So to kind of to keep going on staffing there, as, as you all know, we did change the job description from a fleet maintenance tech to the, uh, to the mechanic. Um, a little update on that position, we, um, we don't have a mechanic in yet, we've been contracting out all that work. So it, it's been kind of a headache, we've had a heck of a time getting one applicants. Uh, we did submit a, an offer to the first applicant that we did interview and to do a second interview with. So we, um, he's on vacation or now he's in Sturgis. And so we're hoping to hear something from him, hopefully by the end of the week, so just a little update on that. The next item of discussion here that we'd like to talk about is, um, I want to kind of talk about the hire. But the next item that I'd like to hit is. We're looking at the, the potential of a staff development plan to transition our maintenance one employees to a maintenance two employee. And, and the reason we're looking at doing this is. Maintenance one employees and maintenance two, they do very, very similar job duties, other than the fact that, uh, there's some. Differences in the level of equipment that they run. And the expectation that they have a class A driver's license and oversight of, um, our seasonal staff. We're having a, we've had a difficult time maintaining. That, that street maintenance one position, keeping guys there. Part of it's the money, part of it's the fact that, you know, they're doing such similar things. And I think if we had a transition plan to enable us to bring in some of these employees that are not quite as skilled. And offer them the ability to move up to that next level. One, it's going to keep the drive, keep them here. And, and have that longer experience, and so I think that would, that would help. And so, um, just wanted to, to throw that idea out there.
And they're on different pay levels.
They are. And part of the problem right now, you know, we have, like Kevin said, it's a very slim line as to what is that differentiation. And, um, to have employees basically doing the same work and getting compensated differently isn't a, an attractive retention tool. So we, we feel that this would be a, a benefit, one, we bring them in with less experience, they start at that maintenance one position. They achieve that three years of experience that we're looking for, they have their class A license. And then if, if they can meet those requirements, then we would move them to that maintenance two, you know, upon supervisor approval.
So you're always probably, and then, then you'd always be hiring for a maintenance one, because obviously everybody would be moving up and over.
That would be the hope.
But just some of the difficulties that we've seen in, in retaining that, that specific level of employee, I think it is, it's a good way to help. To help keep them here and.
And the ones that we're losing is it, you and me have spoken a little bit about this, but it's, they're coming here getting the experience, but then they're being offered. A position in another city, which they would call it maintenance two.
So many communities call that position different things. Service worker, public works worker, maintenance, it, it's all, it's all in the title. So, but there is a little bit of a discrepancy between our one and two, and this goes back to the way that job description is just written. And it's really hard to just kind of, um, get rid of the two and just go to one, so this is a good kind of a.
Transition.
A transitioning point to, and really make it black and white, so when they get here, you can tell them X, Y, Z at three years, you know, you can be here. And so they know right out of the gate, it's not a gray area, it's the expectation.
And would you say most of those maintenance, I mean, because we just see that it's two point nine on here. Those are probably more of our younger employees? Or do we have some that have been on that maintenance one and so there's no option for them ever to move up? Because of the way we don't have a transition plan for them?
I would say everybody has had the ability, some may just not have that.
Drive.
Have that drive.
Okay.
And I think it's a good reward to have that people, to have those people on staff that are willing to kind of push themselves and do that and. Some are okay with the status quo.
And would we pay for them to get their class A? Would they do that on their own? Hopefully.
I think it's good that you have it laid out though, too, because, I mean, it's so different than like our utility operators. If you get this certification, then you get to, it also gives them something to, they need to put the drive into.
The maintenance one is required to have the class B and it's, it's a very, it's a couple hours of testing and some behind the road time. Or behind the wheel time to get your class A, and it's in our benefit to have more class A drivers.
And can I ask what the pay difference is?
Well, maintenance two is at pay grade seven and maintenance one is at pay grade five. Roughly, I, I don't have the.
Okay. There's a big chart.
I'm just curious, and it's kind of, you work hard, you.
You don't want to be promoted. Yeah, maintenance one.
It's about fifty-five hundred to six thousand difference between steps.
Good chunk of change.
And so what, just one other comment, would, would council be comfortable with, with kind of doing this retroactively? We've got maintenance one employees that are at that level?
Have they gotten this class A driver's license?
Many of them do.
So the two point nine of them?
The question is, how, how many, how many would this affect?
Yeah, I was like, how many are moving up?
One person this would affect at this point.
That's fine with me, I just was like, if we're moving the whole chart, that really changes our.
Do we need to change, uh, anything in our policy as far as like implementing how it goes from maintenance one to maintenance two? Yeah, I like Sabrina questions. This is where you defer. But does it need to be spelled out? I mean, if we're kind of retroactively doing something where we're saying, hey, you're maintenance one. And then after three years, you have the ability to move into maintenance two and since we're.
I don't think we need a policy for that, it should just be kind of. I think it'd be something that's included within the job description as well, or, you know, classification of the opportunity for it.
It would just be nice to have it somewhere, so, you know.
Somebody can refer back to it.
Yes.
Five years from now, and you know, you know, if there's someone new sitting up here, they can sit and be like, yeah, this is, you know, the policy that we added. So let, let's not approve anything about that tonight at staff, I'll kind of research that a little better.
And side note, Mayor, since you have one already to go from one to two, do you have, uh, you always hear that, well supervisor, you know, sign off on it. What do you do to, you know, okay, you've met all this, great, you've got everything all set and then, you know, congratulations. Is it like a quick test, what needs to go on, or is it just your approval? Yep, he's ready for one to two and then you decide on, sign off on it and then next check, he's all set and.
I, I think at that point, once that person reaches the years of service, has the license, has proven themselves. We're always doing random, so we're taking them anyhow, so it would just be a matter of, uh, reviewing that with, with staff. And then it would probably have to be a memo to council to recommend somebody from a maintenance one to a maintenance two.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
It might even be that simple.
You recommend council approves?
You kind of covered plow route stuff.
Yeah. Yeah, I've kind of, I've kind of talked about. Yeah, I don't really want to read word for word, so.
Yeah, I think the rest of it, pretty much.
Kind of talked about it, because it talks about Albertville in here.
I'm a balter.
I do think also, just with that discussion and however you guys worded it, for the, for the other staff members, it really probably does add, boost some morale. In that level also, so they know that there is a. If they so choose to do all the stuff, for the current ones that we also have.
But I do like the idea of even including that in the job description, I, I have a feeling it would just make it a lot easier on our end. To be able to say right up front that this is the expectation.
Be very easy to track them, too.
Right.
No. It'd be easy to track them, too, because it's spelled out right there. And next year you'll have a three position, right?
And I would almost think that would help with your hiring, too, Kevin. Get the right people in place for you, so you know that they're going to take maintenance one and they're going to work themselves up there.
For sure, they'll be here for three years, right, you know, like, it kind of buys you some.
Roll in probationary period for one, all that stuff.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds good, thanks.
So all the numbers are good then, right? Good job. Alright, so page thirty-two of your binder is the Streets budget. Well, kind of just hit on a few points here that Kevin maybe didn't touch on. So in total, personal services are increasing about seventy thousand, or eleven percent. That full-time hires about forty-one thousand of that, another benefit of bringing that person on, not in January, is that you're not budgeting for a full year. You can smooth that increase out, uh, over two years, so. Looking at supplies, uh, the one increase I wanted to point out was in object two ninety-three, which is sign, uh, materials. And part of the reason for that is, uh, we've budgeted for an allowance for flashing crosswalks. As those requests come up and staff and council review them, we want to be able to have budget funds to make that possible. And, and also, we included, uh, four thousand dollars for an additional speed sign. So if you remember what the county placed on eighty-fifth street, those little signs that you can strap to other existing signs.
They're great.
Instead of having the, the trailer. So they track much of the same data, they're easier to use.
They look cleaner.
Recommended by the county, so. Included a budget for that. Kevin busy scheduling out that, that trailer, having another one for as big of a city as we are with the number of miles.
Is there ever like, I don't know, grants that we could get for something like that? I mean, have we looked into that at all? I looked to Ron on that one, just like, you know, if any.
I, I don't, I don't think so.
Okay. Worth a try, yeah, absolutely.
I, I didn't want to mess, or I didn't want to say when everybody else was in here, but we did have the Speedway going back out on Packard. Uh, we wanted to get a good reading on it with the, uh, with all of the county projects kind of done. And get a more realistic number, so it's actually out there right now and I can include that in my update this week. So I'll just attach that Speedway green part.
Uh, another change would be in object four forty-five, which is labeled community events. Uh, this is basically the budget for, uh, the cleanup day. Uh, so the year-to-date number is lagging a little bit as we haven't, we've got some bills due to waste management yet for hauling things up to the dump in Elk River. But really that eighty-five hundred is, is kind of a neutral number.
Because we took in funds.
There's revenues, uh, also budgeted for, and so it's basically a neutral account, uh, for twenty twenty-two.
So, so you're going to have it as a budget, but then there's a revenue on the chart sheet and you've got it for the revenue.
So incoming and outgoing, they just wash each other out basically. It is a new line item and having that separate line item helps us track it and be able to trend it from one year to the next.
Right, it's just a nice note, though, to know that, too, because as residents see it, they might see it as an increase where we can say, I mean, we collected for it, too, so.
Lastly, there is a capital purchase of a, uh, we've talked quite a bit about compost site already, but this, this loader bucket. If I'm not mistaken, would be used for that.
So is that something we're buying, so this would be ours or Albertville has one, too, like?
It would be ours.
It's ours.
Not exclusively for.
Okay.
We could use that in storms, we could use it for snow.
The big bucket?
Yeah, it's just that when you're, you've got grass and leaves, if you had a bigger bucket, that machine is more than capable of.
So it's just an implement that we can put on, aren't we saying?
Again, uh, besides public safety, our biggest department budget in terms of dollars and, and staff. So any questions from anybody on, on that, otherwise most everything else is pretty consistent year over year.
So can I back up? Do we, we currently have this bucket, yard compost bucket, and we're, for twenty twenty-two, we're budgeting for another?
No.
No, we don't.
We've, we've, we've got one bucket on it right now and it's only a three-yard bucket, this is a four and a half yard bucket, so it can hold another. When you're moving that compost around, it's just a lot of material, but weighs nothing, the machine can handle it, just more efficient.
You can do two trips instead of three trips.
I thought I saw two, um, a line item for, um, um, a compost screen for like six thousand dollars or something.
Oh, that was in a rental.
Okay, so then we, do you rent, is it every year you rent this, or?
Probably twice a year.
Okay.
You see Kevin all way out renting it versus buying it in UG.
To buy the machine that we rented is about a quarter million dollars.
Yeah, we'll just keep renting.
I just don't see, I'm like, where, okay, I just wanted, I just asked.
We started out demoing one this spring and we liked it so. We started out demoing one this spring, and we liked it so much that we got a price on it, and I said, yeah, we're just going to plan on renting.
Or just go, can we still use the demo?
He, he knew if he came here, we'd be like, no.
I thought about the twenty twenty-two budget, but Adam said this now.
Did you guys read the memo where it says Adam has to meet with him individually to make sure it gets, it's over here? Adam gets to be the meanwhile.
How about a lunch or something, Adam? I know, I'm just kidding, can't do that. I know.
Alright.
Okay.
Page thirty-seven is streetlights. So this is all of the uh, lights along public streets. Our roadways safe, and we pay the electricity on that, and we also budget for up to ten thousand uh, additions. So some of the, especially in the older neighborhoods, they might not meet the the current spacing requirements in the engineering manual. So every once in a while, we'll get a group of neighbors that request a streetlight. If it's in accordance with our policy, uh, then the city will pay to install that. But otherwise, this is all electricity, uh, basically just factoring in year-to-date. Giving a slight inflation, because we'll have more lights next year uh, as well, so otherwise, uh, pretty easy budget.
Are these all LED lights too?
Uh, not all of them are LED lights. I think each of the providers is starting to transition mostly, I mean, any new installation, I assume is LED.
Yeah.
So it's coal burns over there.
Yep, yep.
So have you seen a dip in electrical builders?
Okay. Yeah, it's hard to say that we're seeing a dip.
Because we keep adding more lights, so.
Mayor, what what they they do is they lease them to us, so, you know, with the electricity, the LED lights are more expensive. You can build electricity is a little cheaper, so that initial install, they just charge the same rate as the old ones, and they're slowly transitioning all the LEDs.
So in five thousand years, we'll skip the question.
Pretty much.
No comment?
Yeah.
I won't be here, so.
Yeah, that's why I said five thousand. I'd be here.
Alright, page thirty-eight is fleet management. The wage uh, account is uh, actually level compared with the current year. Depending on how the recruitment process goes, uh, we may need to re-explore this line item, uh, depending on what happens. Uh, with that, but uh, for now, it's it's at the same budget basically as it was for twenty twenty-one. Uh, looking at specific object accounts, uh, number two oh two, which is fuel, I think the cost of fuel we budgeted slightly higher. And more gallons, uh, expected is kind of the trend uh, year over year with more vehicles, more miles, all of that, so. Uh, fuel going up, and then also number two ten and number two twenty, uh, operating and preparing maintenance supplies, so. Again, uh, having that mechanic position, doing more proactive maintenance, having more vehicles. Parts and materials going up. Uh, we've seen a pretty consistent trend on those line items, increasing year over year. Otherwise, uh, charges for services, number three oh nine, uh, this is a new budget item, so we. Kind of demoed some devices from Verizon, uh, GPS monitoring. Um, so this is just a monthly subscription to actually get the data. I believe they provided all of the hardware free of charge. Have to get you to pay the the monthly subscription, of course, but. So Kevin can dive into some of the the benefits there, but it's pretty common on commercial fleets to have GPS monitoring. Give us some really good data.
What phones do you guys, what phones are supplied to all your employees, or all the employees here?
All employees uh, that have a cell phone are provided a a smartphone, services through T-Mobile.
Okay, so does iPhones?
Uh, I, either an iPhone or an Android device.
Okay, iPhones, you have the, the location in there.
Most app, yeah.
But this is something that's actually in the truck.
Yeah, this is a physical, if you look on semis, it usually looks like a big white globe, or half a globe, it sits on top. They can monitor speeds, where they're going.
These are really small, they're actually about the size of a phone. They go, they plug in right into your your CPU.
Do the guys then have to go in and say like, start and label who it is?
Nope.
Okay.
So what we did is we, we started this, uh, um, I'll say about a year ago, we bought, we got a handful of them. And we got them into the vehicles, and we wanted to start tracking some data, see what it would give us, it would, it was really neat to watch on flower routes. You can put it on mowers, you can put it on plows, you can put it on um, trailers, anything with a battery. So one, it gives us the ability to to know where every vehicle is, we're able to look back at the history of where it's been. Sometimes, uh, depending on how often we want to adjust the ping, we can, right now, we've got them going, I want to say every. Sixty seconds, it sends out an alert, so we could actually go in, look at this Verizon Connect map, and it will show us exactly where a truck went out. So, um, you know, if we get a call from a resident saying, oh, this person was speeding, we could pull up that, the person, this truck. Was speeding, I could go up and look at that truck and say, okay, the fastest it went in this x amount of time was fifty-two, or you know, whatever, so. If something gets lost or stolen, we can look it up and see where it's at, so there's some good benefits to having. Um, that, I want to say it's fifteen dollars per per unit a month.
The reason why I asked about it is so, you know, Jim does the fleet stuff for this company, but they just have a login, so that he'll have, so he knows. Who's driving that truck, because he's like, you need to sometimes know, just that the data's out there, it would be Kevin got in and logged in at nine oh five. And he got, because then the day was four o'clock, so you know who was assigned or who was in that vehicle versus just. Having the raw stuff of of the truck speeding, well, now you got to figure out which eight of your employees were the ones driving it, so.
We don't really do a lot of vehicle assignments.
Okay.
We could figure it out though.
I mean, it's very, I mean, I've seen, he's brought them home, you just log in, and it's got a list of all your names, you just fit your name, so it's.
There's a lot of, there's a lot more ways that we can use it than what we're doing.
That, that's what I'm saying, I'm saying that there's a big benefit to probably what you're doing, but they can track them. Assign, you know, if they're all street plumbing, like you said, or patching.
I get an email every morning of what all of those vehicles did.
So you know exactly who's been taking out my bill boxes?
Well, this year.
You don't diesel spots either.
Wait a second.
Actually, I'm super slick, Kevin, but I mean, you can assign all your guys, and you have the main screen, so you would know who is in that truck. It might be a benefit as you, as we grow and.
Right now, I don't have the time for it, but hopefully this new mechanic does.
Yeah, well, but it's training your employees to do it, so.
It it's a great tool.
Uh, last one is object three ninety, contracted service. Um, again, just, these are repairs. Kind of beyond the capability of even our mechanic. Looking at nineteen and twenty, you know, you don't want to budget for thirty thousand and not need it, um, but those vehicles need to get repaired. Uh, when they're broken down, uh, the number this year, I expect to see quite a, well, I won't say quite a bit higher, but higher than. What we budgeted for due to being without a mechanic, so some some of even our preventative maintenance is going out for contracted services. Just increasing that budget to be a little more representative prior years.
In the detail on this one, you had fifteen hundred dollars for the two-way radio service scanning for the fleet's radios.
We, we've also got.
But you just said you're doing eight hundred megahertz, so do you do both?
We do have both, and and the reason we've got them in both is because there is some equipment that we use on a day-to-day basis. That doesn't really warrant having those eight hundred megahertz radios in.
Okay.
And being we already have the infrastructure, we've already had the truck radios, they're already in there. It's a cheap way to keep communication on a day-to-day basis. And with summer seasonals and whatnot, I don't like the idea of giving them a two thousand or twenty-five hundred dollar eight hundred megahertz radio. So it's, it's a cheap way to communicate.
I was just questioning, just because we just talked about eight hundred megahertz, so just making sure we're not spending money on something we're not using, it sounds like we're using. Thank you for the clarification.
Any questions on fleet? Now we can go to forty-eight for economic development, just kind of slip this one in there. Us, same exact budget.
That it always is.
As you'll see in twenty twenty, this is where all of the uh, CARES grant dollars were coded. Uh, again, way over budget, but um, offset with that CARES act money, so. Unless there's anything else the council would want to discuss tonight, that was about all I was hoping to get through, and we did, so.
Your box is checked. So if you go down the back of your packet. Turn to the back, and then this is what we're covering each time. I'm just telling you, I'm helping you get to where you got to be. Okay, where is that? So, in the memo, item two, that was in your packet.
Yeah, you don't get a paper packet.
No, I don't get one, so I didn't get that, but well, but if you, I, if you show probably your item two in your, on your iPad. Oh, yeah, it'll be there, yes, yeah, sorry, close it up. Yes, it would be on there, yes. I know, usually we have one, I'm like, where is mine? Why did you call up? You already know. I'm just saying, it's, it's right here, were you questioning how great you laid it out?
No, listen, I am new, and I, of course, I always think you do a great job laying this out, but. I didn't tell you that, I forgot to tell you that today, I should have told you that.
Never too late.
Pick my stuff up today about my kids, I was going to leave them in your office, but you're on your phone. Question, so with all these numbers and everything, do you have on here? What the city brings in every year, and then what you've spent, and the, what's left over, what's the surplus, what's the, you know, what's in the black, what's in the red? And then is that carryover for next year?
You look on each other, is, is that what you're referring to, like?
Yeah, so all the, after all of this, and then what we have here, if we're in the black, and that carries over next year.
That's why we have to make that transfer.
If you look on page one of your budget book, Jeff.
Yep.
You'll see the summary of how all of this is rolled up, this is just for the general fund.
Okay.
But if you look at twenty nineteen, there was an increase in fund balance of one hundred eighty-seven thousand. One point six million in twenty twenty, and then year-to-date twenty twenty-one, we're at one point seven million.
Okay.
And then the the budgets both for twenty-one and twenty-two are are balanced, meaning that we're not spending down reserves, we're not. Bringing in more than we expect to spend.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Yes. Any other questions or comments? Of course, it's been a long evening with all of you guys. We had, it was so nice to not meet at five thirty for a while there, but I'm excited to be back, don't you? He just came with this look of like, are you crazy?
No, I'm excited to spend the evenings with you also, it's just a lot of numbers, and, you know.
Getting dark out earlier, so.
Go through it line by line, so never worry, and Adam's really good at explaining. Alright, so if we have nothing else, a motion to adjourn would be in order. Second invite Tina. No, that's his name.
I know.
It's, it's like, and she's the second now. Alright, is there any discussion? All those in favor, seeing the board's in eye, all those opposed, same sign. Meeting is ended at nine.